We don't do any public comments. Public comments, yeah. Anyone in the public like to address this board? Let's move along then to citizen survey results. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brennan. So, your last board director's meeting staff did our best we can to give you the results of the survey. The board had some questions that we could all answer. And so, we invited Adam Voloski back to give a presentation on the survey results and then he's probably available to answer all your questions. So, if you don't mind, we'll run through this again. I think Adam will give you some more information that I couldn't provide. Some interesting information and findings from the survey. So, I'm gonna turn over to Adam from there.
Thank you, board member staff. Adam Voloski, Voloski Research. If you recall, we did a pretty broad scope of research for the district. First, a focus group that had participants from all over the district. Here are comments on a whole variety of services and understandings of what the agency does. And we got some really interesting insights from that that helped feed into the development of the survey itself, the statistically valid survey. So, I'll go through fairly quickly on some of them, but I want to give you some, make sure you have a good sense of how to read the data. First, we surveyed 500 residents, which just to give you some perspective, on a statewide poll, you'd survey about 900 or 1,200. So, for Costa Mesa District, pretty robust. We basically looked like to, in 2019, meet people where they're comfortable responding to surveys. So, we talked to some people on the telephone, some people online. And then, we also made sure we included Spanish and Vietnamese as options, both in the telephone version. Start every call with a US-based, English-speaking interviewer, switch to Spanish or Vietnamese when someone asks, or when there's a clear language barrier. And in the online environment, they get to choose right away what language they prefer. 5% choose Spanish, 2% Vietnamese. Doesn't mean that there's more people that don't speak those languages, it just means that that's the group of people who feel most comfortable speaking. It gives us a greater level of accuracy. The online participants got to choose to do it on their phone, on their tablet, on their computer, whenever they wanted. It's quite helpful. So, with that, we'll get into kind of real quick the top issue, which isn't necessarily within the purview of this agency homelessness, but certainly something that's out there and worthy of understanding. If you look down, there are certain things like water and drought that are very low on the list, perhaps one or two people. Environmental issues are there at 6%. So, these are open-ended responses that come in the poll report and results that you can actually look through and get a sense of who's saying what, whether they live in Newport Beach, or they live in Costa Mesa, or unincorporated, their age, their gender, get a sense of what their concern level is and who they are. So, we'll look at quickly, need preferences. Where do you get your news essentially? Online is where they're getting it, and then local television, which is a little bit different than other agencies. Oftentimes, newspapers are high on the list, but not anymore in Costa Mesa and the district overall. I'm gonna go very quickly through the other kind of little modes, just because it's a lot to look at, but you can certainly ask me questions about it later. And then, we asked very specifically what social media or online apps people are using, just so they can, we can get a sense from a direction standpoint, if you're putting efforts out there, putting information out there, where should you be putting it? Facebook is number one, followed by Instagram, YouTube, LinkedIn. And, you know, sometimes there may be some sense that, oh, next door is where everybody is. I get all these comments about next door. In this case, you don't want to ignore it, but it's not as high as Facebook. If you're gonna do ads, if you're gonna do outreach, you better probably start on Facebook and kind of take off the list from there. A lot of people tell us who they name the organization for, picks up their trash. Some say CRR, Waste Management, you're on the list. I think the key here is not necessarily the specific names, but that they don't necessarily identify, they identify the carrier and not necessarily you, which, you know, maybe something you were interested in having, you have a better identity about who you are. And also keeping in mind that we did survey people throughout the district, so some people are single-family homeowners or renters, some people are in apartments, so there's a possibility of some crossover and different carrier, different haulers. So, do you know the services that the district provides? A big chunk say curbside collection, and a small chunk say sewage, it's just not something they necessarily know. And a big group of people, the biggest of all, say they just don't know what you guys do as an agency. I suggest that this is not surprising. This is, you know, for as open and transparent as this agency is, it's just not on the radar of a lot of people. We see that a lot these days, of public agencies that have a big, you know, the big question mark of unsure, I just don't know as a member of the public what the agency is doing, it's just because it's not my focus. I'm going to work, I'm going to soccer practice, I'm going home, I'm not showing up at your board game. And that's okay, because you're not dissimilar. So, getting into the agency itself, we are tracking results, and I'll say, I'll say this at the onset, but I didn't say it before, we have seen a precipitous drop in trust in institutions and government in the last four years or so. So, some of these numbers that reflect a, let's say, a drop in support or approval are not necessarily just reflective on this agency, they're reflective on institutions in America today. And so, that's probably what this is more reflective of, and we see it across the board. Whereas, you know, the legislature used to be down here and local government up here, we would now kind of close the gap a little bit. So, here, we have a very antiseptic description of what the agency is, and, you know, you're five board members, 26 employees, trash and what sewer waste, 72% approval. I'll explain also that in America today, we don't really get agreement by more than about 50% at most. So, when you have 72% of people agreeing on something, that's pretty impressive, very very high approval. And we never want to discount the 5% who say they disapprove, but they're a pretty small number, and we do do some, throughout the surveys, some discovery work to understand why people aren't happy. Real quick, I'll go through the intensity here. So, on the left side is those who approve, 57% strongly approve, and on the right side, among those who disapprove, 46% strongly disapprove. And if you recall, it's that 5.2% on disapproval. So, this is a good sign, we like to see intensity, wherever we're looking for something positive, we like to look for intensity, and you've got a big majority of people who say they support you, saying they strongly support or approve of the agency. For this question, I'll go through the demographics, just so you kind of know how to read it as you go forward and look at the others. We break the numbers down by gender and age on this slide, no real difference. We break the numbers down on the next slide by ethnicity and by language chosen, so you can see again, no real particular difference. There is a bigger factor of unsure among the Vietnamese-speaking population, but again, that's a really small group of people, 2%. And then, we break the numbers down by geography, by community, and then by, in this case, I think I can, oh yeah, by whether they called, visited, or sent an email, or did not contact the agency. Kind of cool that not a whole lot of difference there, but if they did, you know, didn't contact the agency, they just have a little less familiarity. But in general, very high members. And then also, we break down the numbers by, first, if they phoned, we called them, we talked to them on the phone, or online, and then again, by landline or voicemail, how we talked to them, and then if we emailed them or texted them, how they got onboarded with the online survey. So, the goal here is to see if we find discrepancies. One of the things we sometimes find, and you'll see throughout the survey, that sometimes in the online environment, someone's more willing to say something negative, something like that, and that's okay, we like to kind of discover that sort of thing. In this case, the people who came on board through text message are just a little bit more unsure, but nothing too dramatic here. And then, moving on, we specifically said to them, why do you disapprove, that 5.2%? We want to know what it is their problem is, and they tell us, and it is, don't offer recycling or composting programs. So, obviously, that is a group of people who are in apartments or have an environment where they don't get the benefit of, the full benefit of the suite of things that this agency offers. There is an element of poor customer service drivers, not something this agency does, but something you're very conscious of, and I assume that CRR would want to attack that and figure out how to fix it. Prices too high, streets are not clean. These are again, very small numbers, but we like to look at this as homework, something that I'm sure that CRR would want to address and figure out how to fix and make them happy. Not something they want to see on, but again, very small numbers. And then, it is something near the beat of my heart, I've got about, you know, three bins worth of stuff every week in my house, I could definitely use some bigger ones as well. All right. So, excellent, good is how they rate the service, the trash recycling and green waste pickup service that CRR does. We do not put a value judgment on fair, it's just, you know, basically average, it's okay, it's fine. So, if you add fair and excellent together, they're in a really strong position, high majority of people who are saying it's good or it's okay. Again, small percentage of people say poor or very poor, and never dismissing them, but it's very small. Good intensity, I'm gonna go through the demographics, because it's not that interesting. And then, looking at why they are unhappy, or they say it's poor or very poor, don't trust them to sort out recycling, not recycling bins in my area. So, again, very small numbers, but they either don't think it's actually happening, which I think we can all kind of understand, this idea that they're actually sorting through my trash doesn't sound so logical. And, you know, that's, I think, worms, a video, or something like that, that kind of demonstrates it. Inconsistent pickup times, these are very few things that a handful of people have concern over. Trash in the streets, again, and something that I'm sure that they can easily address and fix. All right. So, you're an independent agency, you have your own elected governing body, how important is it that the district remains independent? Still, plurality say it's important, but those numbers have come down, there's a huge unsure, I just don't know. I'm not engaged, I don't know, and that's what the public is saying. So, I wouldn't read too much into the drop of the numbers there. Then, looking at, we asked the question, why is it important that the agency stays independent? These are useful numbers. Less for the city to focus on, prevents government involvement, reduces regulations, it works well, prevents service interruptions, this whole list of things that they think you do the reason why they think independence really benefits. Nonpartisan, not political, it kind of removes from that city hall environment, there's some extra transparency they see, this is why they think that independence is important. And then, why it's, you know, not important, it just doesn't matter, some folks that get against small numbers, cost might not improve, so this idea, need help from government, not kind of fully understanding that you're an independent governing agency, and that's not too surprising, because you look to government to the outside. So, you're debt-free, is that important? Well, it turns out, they say yes, by a pretty big magnitude, they really like the idea. In the online focus group, we actually had some, a little bit of pushback to that, saying, well, debt sometimes is good, sometimes it's okay, you sometimes have to do things infrastructure-wise with debt. So, there wasn't, I wouldn't, from a policy standpoint, I think you're in good stead with the public, but I wouldn't suggest that if you had to go and raise some debt, that you're gonna be in a problem situation, but you're certainly in a strong position with the public, if you stay in this state of course. And then, we asked the question, why is it important that you don't go into debt? Well, debt's bad, and it helps keep rates low, and debt can impact services, and all those things that may or may not be accurate. Debt repayment is costly. And then, please rate the reliability of the sanitary services, 84%, pretty darn high, almost no one says unreliable, pretty tough to beat that. And then, we asked the question about water, no, I'm sorry, about your app. And it turns out that they don't use the app, or they don't, they're not aware of it. Again, not surprising, I think you probably have internal statistics that probably bear this out, kind of a cool thing for an agency your size to have, but, and perhaps, greater adoption is a part of your agenda and something you can really promote, but just the reality is, it's just not on their radar, and that's not surprising. So, level openness, transparency. 63% say they're satisfied with the level of transparency you have in the agency. Again, the basis of understanding of this is very limited. The first thought that these people probably put into this agency was probably, a lot of, a lot of these people was, this conversation that they're having at this point, and the information that they had was, you know, basically the microcosm of the things they read so far before question 16. So, these are very positive numbers for that. 32%, again, unsure, not surprising, not surprising at all. And then, this number dropping, again, has virtually nothing to do, I think, with this agency, and everything to do with a distrust of government in general that's kind of coming onboard. So, 38% think the district is doing enough to protect the environment. You know, we are a coastal community, and we see a higher level of concern for environmental issues in coastal communities. The plurality says you're doing enough, but a big chunk of people don't know. And so, I think this is a huge opportunity for promoting the environmental services this agency has, and the partnerships you have with organizations that protect the environment. Big opportunity to inform those 46%. And then, your programs. So, I caution that, you know, again, people aren't necessarily so aware, but in this case, there's a greater level of awareness. We have, we're discussing here, the large item collection. 70% are aware that you have the service, and you've got a chunk that say they're not aware, a greater level of awareness from before, from two years ago, or three years ago. Looking at, let's see here, so, among those who said they were aware of the service, 65% say they've used the program, and a chunk that say they haven't. So, this is among those who said they were aware. And then, among those 65% who answered they've used it, there's huge satisfaction level. So, not a lot of improvement, room for improvement there. Awareness on door-to-door household hazardous waste collection is pretty low, it's 17%. And, you know, keep in mind that you've got transition and turnover in people living, and high renter base, and things like that. Big opportunity for educating people on this program. Among the small group who say they were aware of it, about 26% say they've used it, and then, among that very small group, 82% are satisfied with it. So, to the extent that you roll it out in greater magnitude, you're gonna have high satisfaction with it. Awareness with the organic recycling program, 39% are aware, 76% say they've used the program, and you've got 10, whoops, 89%, huge number, saying they're satisfied with the program. Looking at sewer inspection rebate, 10% are aware, very low numbers. Used the program, 43% among those who are aware, and then, 74% say they're satisfied. You know, again, very small numbers here, maybe just a couple people say they're dissatisfied. So, now we have the medical disposal, awareness at 30, 29%, using it at 19%, and then, satisfaction is very high among those small groups. Sharps disposal, 31% awareness, 22% have used the program, and then, very high percent, 94% satisfaction. And you see kind of numbers are steady from year over year. Okay, American flag retirement, 80% awareness, 20%, or 22% have used the program, and 89% huge satisfaction among that group. So, here we have the Citizen Environmental Protection Academy, you've got a group of people that have heard of it, 40%, most people haven't, not surprising, it's kind of a much more detail, much more, it's a detail by detail of what you guys do. And you were asking if people would be interested, I think this is a pretty high number, 32% say they'd be interested in participating in the Protection Academy, Environmental Protection Academy. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, say anything about these 36% who say no, other than, they're just busy people, it's just not interesting to them. And, you know, but if you add those maybes and yeses, you've got a majority of your district who says, yeah, tell me more, maybe I'll participate. So, kind of a cool opportunity to keep rolling that out. And what's kind of cool here is, is you do see the demographic of who's interested, and so you can maybe target your message a little bit on that front. So, like, for instance, you know, unincorporated happens to be obviously a very small portion of your district, but still, they're having greater interest in participating. And then, let's see here, why wouldn't you be interested in participating? You know, time is always a factor, pretty much why we see people don't do all kinds of activities, just a lack of interest, and it goes down from there. But really, it's not some sort of, you know, more, less disinterest and more concern over time. So, organics program, to separate foods and scraps, to reduce carbon, carbon dioxide production, approve or disapprove of the program, huge approval, 82%, off just a bit from previous years, but very high approval of the program. Huge intensity, 74%. There's also the very slim percentage of people who oppose it, a big chunk that strongly oppose it, I think it's just the extra work perhaps. And you can kind of see the demographics, but nothing dramatic there. Which of the following is the greatest barriers to participating in the organics program? This is, you know, kind of what, you know, if there was anything that I'd want to spend a little more time on, this is what I'd probably want to spend time on, that's, first, I didn't know about the program, I didn't know if there was room in my property to store organic cart, okay, that's valid, maybe there's some solutions there. I didn't know what could go in the bin, it's something we're seeing all over the country, people just unsure, whether it's recycling, organics, or whatever it is, they just don't know, and there's pushes for icons and different kind of ways of demonstrating what people can do, too hard to separate, so, you know, kind of a homework task list of how to, you know, fix that problem and making, creating barriers. So, rates, we have thrown out there this idea that you haven't raised rates for a while, and you needed to maintain infrastructure, here's how much you pay, and do you support or oppose raising rates to cover the cost of maintenance and infrastructure improvements? Plurality say yes, which is really amazing. We didn't tell them how much, we didn't say it was gonna be $2 or $5 or $20, we let them conjure in their head what it is, and you have a big chunk of support, and a big chunk of people who say, I don't know, who theoretically, as the time goes through, as you educate them, would potentially say yes. Pretty amazing, only 23% without any specific information, say that they oppose it. Strongly support is, you know, the intensity is a little bit less than somewhat, and there's high opposition among those opponents, but really small group there comparatively. And then, you can kind of see demographic-wise who it is, you've got no real big opposition, but a bunch of unsure, and then, again, people who are unsure, but probably looking for more information. Again, no big opposition for any particular group. So, and then, you know, the only group here is the group that just weren't happy generally within the agency, it's not carried forward. So, here we have split samples. First, we talk about a dollar amount, and here it is, we're saying, we're gonna raise rates by $2 to $5 a year over a five-year period. Do you support that? 61% say yes. So, you now have support, if policy-wise you wanted to move there, to raise rates by $2 to $5 a year, 20% who disagree, and a group who are unsure, and we break it down. Interestingly enough, we're gonna start talking about 2% to 5% per year, and you still have plurality support, but you ain't there. And so, what I explained before is, in my household, I pay the water bill, or other utility bills, I pay the property taxes, I have no idea what's on my property taxes, it's a big chunk of money, and I pay, and that just gets paid automatically. I have no idea what's on my water bill, I don't know if it's $20 or $120, and I don't mean to be flip about the dollar amount, but I think a lot of your customers are just robedly paying the bill, or it's someone else in the household that might pay the bill, and so, they don't necessarily know percentage-wise, but I can handle a few dollars, I just know percentage-wise what that means. And so, what this tells us is, we split the sample, we asked half the people about the dollar amount, and half the people about the percentage, you're gonna want to talk about it in terms of dollar amount. It's gonna be much more understandable, and people are gonna be more supportive based upon that. That's what that means. And then, gas for service, over the past year, which of the following methods have you contacted the district? So, most people say they just hadn't, and then, a group of people said they called, and it kind of very quickly cascades from there. But most people have not reached out to you at all. And then, recent contact, I'll put a note here about being among those people who did contact, but 81% were satisfied, and happy with the customer service and the yacht, 66% very satisfied, so really high numbers. There's one thing I'll point out, obviously, this is a community with a very small black population, so one or two people could screw those numbers, so I don't want to make that, I just want to call it out and make it clear. And then, how do you prefer that the district keep you informed about operations? They want a newsletter, mailed to their home. They also want email alerts, they're definitely looking out for social media posts, postcard kind of goes with other mail. Some people open to text messages, and it goes down from there, but, you know, it's a little old school, but mailing a newsletter is something that they're looking for, and something that if you're, you want to utilize to be communicative, because that's where they're looking for the information. How often would you prefer to receive communication from the district? There's like, you know, three or four people that want to hear from you every day, I'm sure, you know, Scott might just send them a personal email. But most people think on a monthly basis is, or the plurality say monthly or annually, and I think you're doing fine. Knowing what you know now, do you approve or disapprove of the district? So, we've kind of given them a lot of information, to some degree, we could have given them information they're not so happy about, the prospect of raising their rates, and we talked to them about some uncomfortable things, like maybe they weren't so happy with the services, a group of people, but you now have, you know, 79% support or approval, and only 3% disapproval, and strong intensity on the support side, and across the board demographically. And then, here's how it breaks down demographically, the plurality say they live in a single-family home, or they own a single-family home, and then, you've got another group who say that they, where is it here, they rent a single-family home, so the majority live in a single-family home, some in townhomes, and some of these people are, you're getting direct services from CRR, others not, but the majority are getting services from this district when it comes to trash. And then, here's how it breaks down by mode and all those different things, language, you can see pretty small numbers, age despair, age group, so, and of course, geographically as well, pretty clear small numbers, unincorporated. So, with that, definitely available for questions. We have a more comprehensive report that has all the open-ended questions and all the cross-tabulated results, if you're into looking at numbers like that. Staff, if they ask us to develop a memo customized for one specific subject, or any other presentation they ask us to give, we're available for that. What else could I say?
Marley?
Okay, I just had a few questions.
Please.
One, the comment that they are being served One, the comment that they are being served, I'd say condos or apartments or something, do they indicate one way or the other that they're not being served, they'd like to be, or they don't say anything, just...
So we identify the people who say that they don't, yeah, they aren't getting the services, they want like recycling or something. Those are open-ended questions, you can see where they live, what kind of housing environment they live in, so you will be able to get a sense of that by reading the open ads.
Okay, okay, and then on the large pickup item.
Yeah.
Do they indicate that they know it's once a year, or two to three times?
They didn't indicate, they're happy with it for the most part, so however it is today, I think you're fine.
Okay, okay. And one other, the organic one, did they indicate anything about the organics, like, you know, having that small pal, or having a certain cart that maybe they don't have, or...
The only comment on the carts, I think, was that some people said that they're, they don't have the space for them, so, and I don't, you know, I, I can't confidently what the option or the alternative is, but to the extent that there is some other, other method of, of collecting that and having that picked up, I think it'd be worthy of a conversation, to see how do we accommodate those people that want to participate, but don't have any space to do it.
Yeah, that's it. I think, I hope you did a great job.
Thank you.
Jim.
Mike?
Charles.
Okay, my question is, how do you acquire the emails?
Ah, so, we, it's 2019, so I know pretty much everything about you, I know, you know, where you bank, and I know your cell phone number, and I know your email number, it's Experian, and all the consumer databases, it's totally publicly available, so...
And can you acquire the emails of everyone at Costa Mesa?
Yes.
Is that easy to do?
Yes.
Is it legal to do it?
Yes, yeah, as long as you're not...
So would that be something that we could acquire?
Sure, yeah. I, I mean, I think there are, there are unique rules for researchers that allow us to conduct, you know, statistically valid research, versus, I think there's some spam rules for just kind of blasting emails out to people. I think, you know, that's just something for council to kind of advise you on, but yeah, any of that is available.
Sure, that's nice to hear. This isn't Las Vegas, if it's in the clouds, it's in the...
No, no, I know.
It doesn't cost us anything for emails. We need to word out about the programs through emails. Jim?
Yeah. When you're doing the online, you know, a lot of firms now, you know, retail firms, insurance firms, and other people, when you're talking to someone, when you're online doing a survey, that little box in the corner pops up, says, "Would you like to chat someone?"
Sure.
Do you basically use that, do you?
Uh, no, you mean during the survey experience?
Well, while they're doing the survey, it's kind of like when you're, you're looking for something to order, whatever your wife orders on, that little box pops up in your life, says, "Hi, Adam, would you like to chat what you're looking for?"
No, we don't, because we want them to kind of complete the survey experience. So, I mean, on our, on my business website, we have that, it's very kind of a cool thing. I love it, I get really interesting inquiries from it. But no, we want them to kind of just complete the survey experience, and, yeah.
In terms of the people that think we don't recycle, I think we pretty much determined that those are people that are multifamily, or serviced by the city.
Right.
In a, in a, in a bigger sense.
And that could be some commercial folks too, yeah.
Okay.
We'd be able to have businesses or something, yeah.
So if we were to talk to the city about certain things, one of the keys would be, you have a bunch of people out there that don't participate in organics or recycling, because the city doesn't offer some of the same services we do. Is that unfair?
Very fair, we can quantify it, show them it, and tell them, "You've got a, quite frankly, a clamoring from the public, saying, 'I want these services, I want to participate,' and I don't get the opportunity to."
Okay, and then finally, the social media, where people get their information on social media, Facebook tends to always be the biggest.
Yeah.
I mean, most businesses focus on Facebook, or what, some others. The Nextdoor thing, I just started doing Nextdoor not that long ago.
Yeah.
And I'm absolutely amazed how negative, it's two things, people are always putting negative stuff in there, or they're looking for a painter or an electrician.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, look, it's, I, I, I think it's kind of well-known for being a, a place where people express their racism, and anger, and negativity. Look, it's very local, and, and it's a, it's a unique, finite group of people who are kind of posting on a very regular basis. Now, that said, if people are living there, and constantly there, as an agency, you probably want to kind of essentially meet people where they're at, and, and also not let conversations go unanswered, to the extent that you have the ability to. You know, I, I think you're probably going to participate in other online worlds first, but if, if you're going to grow your social media profile, or have, you know, in-house ability to do that, that may be one of the next places you'd go, yeah.
I really appreciate your comment about, I think people who do surveys and things online will tend to be more negative, or they'll bring up the negative stuff.
They can.
Because no one's saying, "Well, what do you mean by that?"
Right.
Or, can you, they just want to remember that they, their trash didn't get picked up one time, so...
Yeah, and then, interestingly enough, it wasn't, so there was no real dramatic scenario like that.
You did see that.
Yeah, we do see it sometimes, but not here.
Okay, thank you very much, good job. Very nice.
Anybody else have a comment?
You know, one, one small thing that I, is it said in the, that the streets weren't clean.
Right.
Well, that's not our responsibility.
Well, I, I think, first of all, a very small number, but I, I think it was maybe a trash day or something like that, where trash, you know, gets, gets thrown, thrown about, or the streets are generally not clean. I, I think the, what's cool about that is that that's, you know, you can tell the city, you can tell CRNR, and, you know, they can tune up their, they're making it a little bit nicer, and that's not a hard thing to fix. It's probably, probably something that they're aware of anyway, they probably have a, you know, are armed with drivers to make sure that there's nothing left over when they leave.
I, I think it's interesting, kind of that same name, when you ask, I think the first question, what's the big issue with homeless, homelessness occupies everybody, I mean, it's just, it is the, the...
Yeah, we, we don't tend to see a number that dramatic in any community, we tend to see things at eighteen to twenty percent, when you see something approaching forty percent, it's kind of to the point where if the, if the city or public agency don't do something about it, you're going to have some sort of, you know, mutiny on the table, because you gotta, they gotta address it, and I think they are, you know.
I think Mr. Mosher would...
What, Mr. Mosher?
Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, President Fairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I want to emphasize, reading what I've seen in the staff report there, this is a survey of voters, it does not include non-resident property owners, which might be the owners of a residential complex, might be the owners of a business within the district. Those are people who do not vote for you, but they're the people who are paying the bills of the district through their property taxes. I would think it would be important to know what their understanding and attitude is towards what they're getting in return for what they're paying on the property taxes. As to the questions that were asked, for example, who picks up their trash? Not everybody in the district, of course, has their trash picked up by the sanitary district. As Mr. Prabalski says, they know everything about the people who they were interviewing. I'm surprised that in the presentation of the results, it's not telling you which respondents are actually people who use the services of the sanitary district. When they answer they think their trash is picked up by the public or waste management, that could well be the correct answer. And so I find the survey a little confusing, because it's, it's telling whether people are happy with a particular service, but we don't know that they're using the service or not. As to some of the specific questions, like the one about whether they're happy or would be opposed to a rate increase when they were told it was going to be two to five dollars over five years, or two to five percent over five years, I'm wondering how many of those heard, it was two to five dollars per year, each year, over five years, so do we know for sure what they're answering the question, what they thought it was? The question about how many had contacted the district in the last year, we heard that one in four people out of a hundred thousand had called the district in the last year, I find that surprising. We're talking about twenty-five thousand people calling during the year, I find that odd. And then finally, if you have not done so, I don't think the Citizen Advisory Committee saw that, but in your agenda packet online was posted complete results that include the actual verbatim that says answers to some of the questions, I would commend you to look at those, I think you will find them probably more interesting than bar graphs, you'll actually hear what people said, although some of the answers are very terse. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to make sure I address each of those points, if, 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 more than I can do.
Sure.
So, good point, there are property owners who were not included in the survey, and the way we look at this is, is in Costa Mesa, in Orange County, in Southern California, the eligibility, the people who are eligible to vote, and, and are registered to vote, very closely match the adult population, and so we're, we're, the benefits of having all the demographic information built in from the database, the voter file, and other databases, it kind of, we evaluate, is, kind of outweighs potentially the group people we might miss. And I think the prospect of conducting research among, let's say, an absentee property owner who owns a, you know, a two-thousand-unit apartment building, or something like that, I, I think, most agencies don't tend to do that kind of research. And, but if you're interested, I think that's a, you know, a very short list of potential people that Steph could probably just call and have a conversation with, or we could if you were interested in that research. As far as looking at the data based upon whether they were a user or not, I think it's a very interesting call, we're happy to provide that, and it actually would be in the cross-tabulated results, just not in the slides, but if you want to see that illustrated better, we're happy to. And I think the other point of being surprised that twenty-five percent, or a quarter or so, called the district, I too am surprised by that number, I think realistically, what they're saying is they called the hauler, or the agency, and most of them probably called the hauler. So it's just, you know, that kind of understanding of the difference between the two is just not as, as clear as it is in this room.
The survey focused, I mean, people responding at this survey, I think we talked about this before, overwhelming majority of these people are thinking in terms of trash. I mean, we saw that, there was one number where the sewer was, what, very few, so this is all, I agree with you, I think they may be calling the hauler.
Yeah.
Twenty times more than we get called, at least, so I think that's an important consideration.
Yeah.
Scott, did you have some?
Yes, Mr. President, you might recall, last month, when we presented the branding issue, which is on your agenda, there, for discussion today, we talked about branding, you know, it was a question from the board that wanted to ask Adam, do you, if he felt that branding was necessary, so we want to ask that question, since he's here, now it's time to ask that question.
Did you just do it?
Well, I don't know, it's just...
I can hear it.
We see a, a lot of public agencies taking on the role of, okay, how do we better communicate with the public? How do we look at data like this and say, you know, let's get in front of them ways, meaningful ways that they're looking at data, they're looking at information, how to talk to them and give, raise maybe the profile of the agency, not just for profile sake, but for making sure they're familiar with services, and, and have the ability to really utilize your services. So to answer the question, I see great value in it, look, I'm a consultant, so we like consultant stuff, and so, but, the reality is, we work for a lot of agencies, and when we test data today, and we test data in a year or two from now, or three, whenever the agency likes to do it, if in that interim, there's been a lot of public outreach and education and public relations work, which we see a lot of our clients do, there's significant increases in awareness and understanding and appreciation for the agency and the services. So I, I think, and I think there's great value in it from a, a public standpoint, right? If, if they're not knowing about the services you're offering, and you bring them a greater familiarity, there's going to be greater adoption, and they're going to have better experience as, as, as members of the public.
In that same vein, is, is there a difference between raising awareness of what the agency does and branding? I mean, we seem to have a pretty popular sense out there, the community appreciates and likes what we do.
Sure.
Is there a difference between brand, when I think of branding, that means changing the, the image.
Right.
Whereas raising awareness might be, keep doing what you're doing, but maybe raise it a few notches, is there a difference between those two things?
I think there is, and, and I think, you know, staff can, you know, present the different options, I'm sure if you, if you move forward to something like this, you'll, you'll talk to some of the best in, the best in Orange County, or from wherever, but, yeah, there's a big difference between, you know, promoting the agency from a branding sense, changing your, your look and feel, if that's something that you're interested in doing, big difference between that, and, and specific programs, and, and trying to put what you do in front of them. I, I think, I think a lot of times in an agency like this, it kind of looks very similar, because you're, you're not promoting, or you're not Coca-Cola promoting Sprite and Coke, and Coke Zero, you're, the agency, you are promoting the openness and transparency of the agency and the specific services, and, and I think it kind of melds together, because you don't have a, you know, two-to-a-million-dollar budget, you've got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. And, and so I think, I think it's for the consultant to kind of, you know, give a better perspective on, but yeah, I think it kind of looks a little bit similar.
Marley?
Adam, when you started out, you said "we."
Yes.
Okay, now, does that mean that you actually take on somebody who needs awareness, and instead of just the branding part of, you know, the logos and things?
Sure.
Actually, the contents of what you stand for, and how you publicize yourself?
So we, as, as a firm, definitely do things like create video content, create social media content, help with your newsletter and things like that content. We tend to, and, and we're happy to, engage us, we're happy to help with that. We tend to work with a more traditional PR consultant, who does this sort of thing, and, and has, you know, an account manager who's going to work directly with staff on a day-to-day basis, and, and there's some great firms, especially based here in Orange County, that do that for a living, you know, Primal Associates, and Greyshock, and some of the others, so the answer is, yes, if you want our help, we'll sit down, make a plan with you, and potentially be able to do that as a service, but also, you know, we don't want to discount the, the big boys that have this for, for a living, and they have a little more PR press component to them, or something else.
Do you not do public relations?
We don't do PR, public relations, but I don't know how, I think, I think, obviously, staff might have a better vision for what they want to present, I don't know how much PR proper you're doing, like, you know, media relations, I think you've got that kind of covered, right? You probably pitch ideas to the press, get something published, you know, once a year, and, and that is relevant, I mean, there's not a lot of press around anymore. I think what you're probably looking more towards is education and outreach and messaging, and that's something we definitely do, when you're participating with, directly with the staff, or as a part of a contract that you're going to work with another consultant, pull us in however you want to, we're available for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment?
Adam, thank you very much, and we, our next step, I think, is to have a study session or a session discussing what direction we want to go on this issue. direction we want to go on this issue. And we may need your input, you know, at that time, but.
Always have one.
Thank you once again though.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's move along to code enforcement officer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Officer Roberts is not available today, but well, staff will do its best to answer any questions you may have. If you can't answer them, we'll, we'll have Ed come back next month and answer the questions.
Anybody have any comments?
The only comment I had was during the Thanksgiving portion, it just seemed to me it was raining and it was ugly out and everything. And not, at least in my area, and I went to some other areas too, so the trash people were not turning around and putting the lids on. And so because of that, it was filling with water, which made it very difficult to have to, you know, get the water out when it's full, that kind of thing. And so I think somehow we need to be educated that, hey, you know, we've got to get back to ground one, that we need to be sure that when it goes over automation, the whole idea is to bring it back and to have it covered. So I just had a comment.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll now address the operations.
Have you addressed that before, or is that in other cities or not?
Internally, operations may be. Ours from CRNR. Yeah, internally, I'm sure operations has discussed that when, when rain's approaching, they're sure they look at the weather forecast and try to stay prepared for that. As far as, have we received a complaint recently? This would be the first complaint that I've heard of, of the drivers during this rainy season where they were not placing the carts completely down with the lids closed. And, you know, I completely understand that that would be an issue. You know, you might be at work all day, by the time you get back, your cart could be full. You know, it gets heavy. So actually, I'll relay that to them.
I would answer, my cart has been without the lid. And so I left it that way and put my jug in it and they picked up a lot of water.
So are you saying that your cart, the lid's missing or it's?
No, it's not missing. It just didn't flip over and then flop back.
Which, which area do you live in, in Costa Mesa?
East Eighteen Street.
Okay. And then you're around College Park. Thank you. I'll also relay that to operations.
Okay, Mr. Mosher, did we cover your?
Yeah.
I think the H report was good. You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't change from month to month. It's still the same type of activity, you know, and I think Ed does a pretty good job of patrolling it. It's interesting, you seem to have a lot of problems on Royal Palm and Pepper Tree. And Pepper Tree, I think you guys have noticed that over the last, I saw a lot of activity in that area. I guess it's a proliferation of apartments, but it's so close to Harvard Boulevard that I think, I see the same, that's where my office is. I see the same people over and over again out there. As hard as Ed works, it's got to be.
That's why I always ask the question, is it repeat offenders? Any issues? Says no.
It's funny, I, I can, I know three people, or two people that I see all the time on the alleyway off Royal Palm. It's tough.
Okay, let's move along. Organics tonnage report.
Just standard report. Staff, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Scott. Okay, solid waste diversion report.
Same as President, just a standard report. Staff, do you have any questions?
Any, any questions?
I have a question, or maybe a comment. I'll bring up under solid waste. We do a lot of extra programs with battery recycling. We do all this stuff. Is there a way we can give some thought and maybe going to involve some conversation with CRNR regarding cardboard? I don't know if everybody gets the same deliveries to their home that I get to my home and to my office, but this proliferation of cardboard, especially with the Amazons and all of this stuff, we got to look into some way of maybe working with Orange Coast and working with CRNR about some emphasis on cardboard collection.
That'd be a good topic to discuss, as always, now can we?
I, I was going to ask you if that's where you wanted to do it.
Mostly seeing it's the time of card, because I took some over after the Fourth of July and it was packed and they had nothing to get more stuff in. So they do a program that people take there.
Okay, I, I know from, from the hauler's standpoint, cardboard's not a, I mean, you guys just don't have, you don't have a market for it anymore. I know globally that.
China.
China's not taking any cardboard. But it seems like, I know I spent about forty-five minutes the other day cutting up cardboard boxes because, especially this time of the year, my wife has discovered Amazon.
I suggest, oh, that was prepared.
Did I take it ten minutes? What's that?
They, the Orange Coast. They, they take, they take the cardboard.
The, I just, you know, I wear out razor cutters cutting this stuff.
They put it over there.
But I think that might be a public program that we could look at because.
Just to encourage more people to do it.
Yeah. So that, okay, Scott, I agree. Maybe that's something we can talk about starting tomorrow. Okay.
Okay.
One more thing to add to that would be, they could also utilize a, if they have a lot of cardboard, maybe they bought some appliances, some TV or so forth, they could also utilize a belt guy and pick up anything. But, you know, I completely understand that you might not have much cardboard, but, you know, it, you might want to utilize that for something like actual furniture and so forth. So completely understand that residents doesn't want to use it, but at the same time, like, yeah, if you have, use yours.
It's become a big deal. I mean, I don't know if you guys are, are you significant others aware, but you know, some little item this big, an Amazon sensitive box this big.
Yeah. Do you take the cardboard from Orange Coast County? Is that part of your function over there?
Oh, so I, I'm not directly involved in that, but yeah, Mike and he works with, you know, with people from our operations team. From what I understand, yeah, we take all the materials they collect there.
I mean, another way to get some diversion up too. Well, I think it's part of their diversion, isn't it, Scott?
Yes.
You know, I also see that the cardboard is part of the diversion. But that's something you guys should talk about, maybe people just need to know that they do take.
I think that's a good, a really good point, yeah. Okay, thank, thank you for indulging.
Okay, next on the agenda is consider hiring a public relations firm.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was first discussed at your last board meeting and the board directed us to bring this back to discussion today. Specifically, the board wanted to know what's the objectives we're trying to achieve if we move forward with this program? So I'll material to Mela Boothon, she heard staff for it and she has some suggestions on how proceed on this program, so.
Good morning, President. Very, very many members of the board. For the recent completion of the 2019 Citizen Survey, staff is asking the Board of Directors to consider hiring a public relations firm to assist staff with branding and promotion of outreach programs. Hiring a public relations firm can assist staff with meeting the gap that currently exists in our outreach programs. The firm would assist in creating a strategy plan and variety around outreach for our programs, increase social media presence and collecting data to build a minimal database. The districts, the district we need to go out to RFP to hire a public relations firm and estimated costs are between fifty thousand to sixty thousand a year. The costs include the development of the strategy plan, social media person, flyer and flyer development. Specifically, staff is interested in a series of campaigns aimed at the mixed waste cart and organics. So for survey results, a lot of residents don't believe that CMSD or CRNR recycles. So we can educate them of how the merp operates and recyclables are taken out. With organics driving around on trash day, I see a lot of organic carts filled with trash and cardboard. So educating residents on what goes in there, that we have kitchen piles. And additionally, a campaign for just all of our additional programs like the Door to Door. That survey results show that most of our residents are unaware of the CMSD app, that they can go download the app and submit complaints for missed pickups, or if they want to schedule a larger Door to Door program. Branding is a multi-year effort and staff wouldn't, staff would be able to increase community awareness by track, by tracking program participation, tonnage collected, contamination of the carts, to see if our organics contamination either decreases or increases in an overall diversion data that we report to the board every month. It's important to note that this was not budgeted for. If the Board of Directors decides to hire a public relations firm, funds were need to be appropriated from the socialized fund balance and wastewater contingency fund. This concludes my report. I'm available for any questions?
Warren?
Good question. When we put out a newsletter, how often is that?
That is quarterly.
And what does that cost for newsletter? What is it?
For newsletter or annually?
No, what does it cost for quarterly right now? Because on a cert.
It's about ten thousand per quarter, so forty thousand per year.
Okay, so if we increase that, that would increase our cost.
Or as.
If it's on a survey, they, you know, people wanted it monthly.
If we wanted to do something monthly, our newsletter is currently four pages. We could, if we wanted to do a monthly, we can maybe do a front and back page, something smaller.
Would that be lower the cost?
We, we would need to speak with our consultants.
That'd be something I'd like for us to look at as a possibility. This is a possibility, see if it fits. And then, you know, like, like this suggestion with the emails, I don't know, if we have access to the emails, we do that for free, you know?
Yeah, we're doing that. We're also looking in texting. There was a company, I think, I saw, I see the conference that they text. And the great thing about texting is that you don't have to download an app. So we have a call, they're based out of South Carolina, that's the only thing. They don't have, they're, they don't have any clients out here in California. They're working on some clients. That's kind of downside, but we have a demo with them coming up and we're looking at that, but that's also a great way to get the word out.
That's a thing, so plus I can, I've been seeing them be more active on Facebook. I don't.
Because Gina.
It's been more, we've been more active, giving something almost every day.
Yep, yep.
That's, that's been really good.
And they do a great job of that, absolutely.
So, you know, personally, I would, I wouldn't want to hire a consultant at this time, maybe in the future, but see how these other programs possibly can work into it. Just my feelings.
Arlene, or no, what, Mike?
No, those are.
Okay.
You know, I'm really concerned over this program. I am concerned to the part that, I'll just suggest something. I think we should have a study session just on this item, that we all come together on what we're doing. I think, you know, branding, I don't like the word because we do branding, to me, we do this already with, you know, all our paperwork and stuff. So, you know, I think it's more than that. It's educating and awareness and outreach to the public, but we need to kind of put our ducks in order and all sit down and look and see what we feel like. We want this, not necessarily a consultant, but to be able to look at this and say, okay, maybe we need somebody just to commit. That's why I was questioning Adam on this, because I thought, how interesting, just to get educated with the public, to have them more aware. You know, he's got the items that we've started and maybe we should get into this a little more and just sit down in the study session and just make sure that we talk about just this, and one thing will brainstorm another one. So anyway, that's my thought.
I don't mind looking at this proposal, and I know staff spend a lot of time in developing what we want to do to increase our presence, and I don't have a problem with that. Well, I guess, and, and I agree with Arlene, if we're going to sit down, let's talk about, this could be a big effort, huge effort for us. What I would like to see if it's possible, let's go ahead and send the RFPs out. Let's send some RFPs out and have these consultants or PR firms tell us what they're going to do and at what cost. I mean, if you guys are estimating fifty to sixty, it could be less, it could be more. I would like to see what a firm would do for us before we make a decision. I love, I can agree with Ar, I don't know if we, you guys do such a good job, and I think it's reflective in our approval rate of that survey, that, that people do believe in us. Again, surveys are, you know, five hundred people is a pretty good cross-section, but it's not everybody. There's some elements that are missing, so I wouldn't mind sitting down and looking at some proposals that you guys get from consulting or PR firms and make a decision, a more educated decision on my part, I think.
If we did that, does that require staff under those RFPs or not?
No.
No. So we're just looking for their ideas?
We're looking for their ideas and what they can do for us if we decide to go that route. I'm not sure we will, but it's, doesn't cost anything to get a RFP out there, right?
Yeah, if you want, we can have them each encounter and tell you what, what they're going to do, you know, kind of like an interview.
Would that be fair to them though, if we're, if we're just looking for information?
Yeah, that's, that's, they're probably, you know, they're not going to put a lot of effort in if they know there's not commitment from us, you know, they're, so just be warned, yeah, that's, I think it's.
We have to be fair to them.
Yeah.
Have them use up their time.
Right.
You know, I do that daily, I, I get requests from people every day, not knowing whether or not they're going to visit. If, if you're not available, if you're not giving proposals, you have zero chance of getting the business. At least this way, they have some chance of maybe getting the business. So I don't think firms would balk at, at doing what Scott's saying, giving us, coming in here and presenting.
As long as they know upfront.
The, the board's considering it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm always nervous about the branding thing because we are doing a good job. People think we're, we're changing our brand.
Well, I guess, let's just call it different. I mean, we're just calling it here.
Yes, Scott, that's, that's.
We're just calling it, we're just, we're just, change the name, outreach program, public outreach program. We're calling it branding and obviously it's getting people mixed up on what that is, so we just call it different.
I, I think as far as the public outreach, we're still working on that diversion rate, and I don't think we're going to increase the diversion rate until people buy into it. If we have to do some public outreach to get people to buy more in, like, like Mela said, I'd be really curious to, to do a survey of organic. I don't think we can go through day roads and open carts and look at them or not.
Well, that's in the next.
That's the next.
I, I just, if we're going to get the people to buy in, if we're going to get the residents to give us.
We should go for that.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to do some public outreach.
I think we have, the district has amazing programs out there. We have a great organics program and there's a lot of turnover, there's a lot of renters. We did education once and it's, there has to be consistent education over the years. We live in a place where there's a lot of students, we have a lot of universities. So students come and go every few years, so we can't just educate ones and expect residents to understand and continue to participate. I was present for the focus group that Provolski did. Most of those residents had no idea. They assumed our services by the name, sanitary district. So they assumed sewer, trash, street cleanup. So I think it was just a big eye-opening that most of these residents are not aware. After we showed them videos that the district has produced over the last year, they're, they completely changed. They were like, why isn't this out there? Why hadn't I heard of this program? Why didn't I know that a kitchen pile was available? This is so amazing. And just to be able to read through that transcript and see how, just a few videos, a newsletter, just changed, completely changed their perspective. I think having someone that can come assistance, that has the tool, that have the tools, that know how to do this. Gina and Angela do an amazing job with social media, but we don't really have the budget to do outreach for all of our residents. We don't really have the tools. So a consultant would come in to help us meet the gap, to build partnerships, to build relationships and to better get our programs out there. And hope, you know, our end goal would be educating them about the different material types that there are programs out there and as well as increase our diversion and hopefully even reach the seventy-five percent.
Yeah, I, I think you guys understand that this, this board's been pretty consistent over the last several years about, if we're going to spend money, we want the results. over the last several years about, if we're going to spend money, we want the results. I, I, I think this board is really good at getting results for what we spend. We've slipped a couple of times, but for the most part, we want, if we're going to spend this kind of money, it's gonna have to make a difference. And I think you guys understand that, I think, so that's why I would like to see what these firms can do.
Just change the name?
But the only, yeah, the only thing I cannot see is that word branded. Because if that got out in the newspaper, to me, it's dollar signs, you know, and it's not real compared to everything else that public relations would do, you know, so that's my only.
Kind of like the Coke versus Pepsi. You know, Pepsi trying to change their brand, you get a solid.
They'll think the wrong thing, that we're trying to rebrand ourselves.
Good suggestion, maybe have the ad hoc, can we take the lead on this?
Say it, say it.
Do some, do some interviews with the firms and the ad hoc, we can make that a condition.
Yeah, I agree, that's a safe, same thing. I think that's a great idea, personally.
Have the ad hoc with Bob and Jim, and that's part of their responsibilities.
Bob and I.
You just called him Jim.
Obviously, sorry.
Bob and Mike.
I was thinking.
I'll never use good looking.
I was getting confused.
I think, I, I thought that would be real good.
I, I think that'd be one of the things we should talk about.
Okay.
Or, yeah, start tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I think that, you know, we need to be as precise as we can be about what direction and what we want to reap from this, you know, not just, uh, spending money for the sake of spending money. Okay, so, is that the will of the board? Put that on the agenda?
Yep, we've got that, that's our statement.
Okay, great. Car-to-car organics outreach program.
Thank you, Mr. President. You might recall about four years ago, we did a, um, organics behavioral study with UC Irvine. And one of the interesting facts that came out of that survey is that, what we learned is that when residents found out their neighbors was participating in organic recycling program, they started participating again, you know? It was, was fascinating. So once they learned that, hey, I'm good, I, I learn good too. So this concept that Avila is going to present to you, it's, it's kind of that passion. We want to obviously encourage people to, to recycle. Also, um, uh, have an impact on preventing contaminations because as Avila mentioned earlier, we're seeing a lot of contaminations in the organic art. So we want to make sure people are, are, are recycling the right materials. And those who are recycling the right materials, we want to give a shout out, you know?
Kind of reward them.
How to reward them, maybe, maybe put their name and picture in our newsletter, you know, and say, hey, great job doing recycling, helping us get our sustainability diversion, something like that. I'm going to kick it over to Avila. She's going to give you more in depth of, of the program and looking for the board's feedback and, and support for this program.
President Fergie, members of the board, uh, part of the twenty eighteen CRNR agreement, CRNR is to implement a car-to-car outreach program. We are finally kicking it off. The program consists of canvassing neighborhoods, checking the organic carts and leaving the district approved tag on the cart. Gina, will you please elaborate a little bit? So through this program, like Scott mentioned, we will be highlighting a star resident that does a great job at source separating. So two tags have been developed, the awesome tag. It's thanking them for correctly using the organic cart and placing green waste and food waste in the cart. And then it gives them a little snapshot of what happened since the program implementation. Like thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine tons of recycled materials since the program began. There, a news tag has also been developed and this will be given to, this will be placed on carts at homes that who have a contaminated cart. And specific feedback will be given, so did they have trash? Did they have plastic bags? Did they place recyclables or even an empty one if cars notices anything else? And then they gives them information with a cart's floor. So it's for food waste, yard waste, gives them specific information. And then also tells them that we have a volcano pickup, HHW, and it's not accepted and to contact CRNR for scheduling of, um, to get rid of that material. So Pards will be doing the outreach. He will be visiting a hundred and fifty homes per quarter and he will be visiting them three weeks in a row. So week one, he'll visit the hundred and fifty homes, leave a cart tag, he'll record the results. Week two, he'll go back, check again the organics cart to see if any behavioral changes have been, if the cart tag helped the resident, kind of educate the resident, make better decisions. And then week three, it'll just solidify if any behavioral changes are observed. The cart tags are in black and white because CRNR has declined to print them in color. So staff is recommending that the Board of Directors direct ACRNR to print them in color just because the food items, the food logos, it is really hard to know what they are.
Let's say it catches people's attention too. I think, like, if you have that big oops and it's yellow, it's going to catch their attention.
Art, that's a great question. Has this been done in any other city?
So, uh, it's a good question. Um, they have done outreach efforts in other cities, um, of similar sorts, like two cities locally, uh, Tustin and Laguna Go. Um, they both are doing a card audit outreach. Um, very interesting thing though, with the sand district compared to those other two. Um, Gina, if you could go back to the, uh, the positive one, when they do it right? So interestingly enough, um, I'm not exactly sure why the consulting firm in those two cities is economics. I asked the two, um, coordinators that work those two cities, why you guys didn't do a positive one. Um, but yeah, interestingly enough, in those two cities, they're giving you, they're leaving you a tag when you have a contaminated cart, but they're not leaving you a tag immediately or correcting. Uh, but yeah, so it is something unique, uh, in the sense that, while it is common, but it's unique in the sense that this is one of the few cities I've seen that is doing a positive one, you know, to reinforce.
We know San Diego, that's where they kind of have the ideas in San Diego, so they'll put a picture of, a picture or a newsletter.
I like that.
So that's the town.
The tag that will have been came from Luis Texco, one of the sessions I attended. The cart tag, um, is actually a sample, the awesome, the awesome and the emoji is from the recycling partnership. It's a nonprofit nationwide company and they, they're a consultant, so they get hired to do this type of, type, type of outreach. So they developed a nos, a positive and a negative tag, so after attending their session, I thought it was great to not just highlight or tell them you're doing something wrong, but also make them feel good if they are correctly using the organics cart.
You know, both these cards are, are, I don't have a problem, but there's one thing missing on each cart.
Our logo already.
Yeah. This is only, I mean, we just finished talking about raising the awareness in the community that, that we pick up, that we're responsible, but yet we're not mentioned on either one of these.
So it was left out spacing wise and also I think along with the promotion of programs, not confusing the residents of who does what. We can definitely add the logo in our contact information, but we are specifically telling them if they need a cart, they need to schedule a program, they can contact CRNR. So it's just to reduce the confusion of to who's who, who's doing what, but we can definitely add the logo in our contact information.
I think that little, with your help, that little gray box, no one's going to read that. I'm just telling you right now, no one's going to read that. Our logo right there and our partnership, emphasizing our partnership with CRNR is going to help us.
Yeah.
So that's what I would suggest.
And you know, I love the part that it identifies what should be in the cart because people are so confused and I'll tell them, you know, yay, you put your dog poop there. You could, what? I could? You know, they don't understand all the things that can go in there.
I don't see a picture of a cigar, you know? I was told by Dean that cigar butts can, and I don't see a cigar bun anywhere.
Art, I got it, Art. Okay, so you've done this, the CRNR run is perfect.
Uh, so in case of Costa Mesa, I will be the one doing the outreach.
Do you have someone that you hired to do it, or do you do it yourself?
Uh, Costa Mesa, I'll be doing it myself.
And you're going to go to those homes and residents that have their organic cart?
Yeah.
Do it yourself?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do, like Avila was mentioning, so we'll do a hundred and fifty homes in the sample and, um, we'll do the sample three consecutive weeks to kind of track and get a better feel for how they're doing. Um, I'll collect data each time. It's basically just two tags I can put out. Um, and in the case of the ones doing it correctly, it's really straightforward. And the ones doing it wrong, you know, we have the three criteria that-
And my next question, huh? When you look, do you look in the cart yourself?
I will look in the cart, yeah.
And what if it's something that we don't want in it, but it's at the bottom of the organics cart?
So in that case, um, you know, I, I wouldn't know what's at the bottom of your organics cart.
So you're just going to take a visual look and make, give a tag and then you're going to give us a report back after three weeks or so?
Yeah, so I'll do the best I can visually to gauge it. Um, obviously I'll smell it too, but I'm, yeah.
Do you ever get complaints from people that you're looking at the cart?
Um, I mean, I've, we've done some pieces of outreach, you know, I've been walking the neighborhood. Has anyone called in? Nobody's called into our customer service and said like, you know, some male was looking around my neighborhood.
This is the first time we will be opening lids. It's a hundred and fifty homes. The first neighborhood we're going to canvas is Misa Verde. Traveling around, we noticed not all the homes, they're mostly single-family homes and not all of them had the organic carts out and the, we saw a lot of green waste in mixed waste carts. So we figured this is an older, single-family, more established neighborhood. It's a good place to-
I think you made a good choice.
I think people use their organics cart.
Yeah.
So this would be a pilot program, which is great. If we could publicize that.
And, and there's no cost to us for doing this? This is one of your services?
It is, yeah.
Which is, what you're, what you're putting on the, on the colored tag, is, is black and white okay with you or are you running out of color?
It doesn't matter to you personally, but it-
Whatever is more attractive to the homeowner.
I think you make a good point by putting it in color. People notice it. They see the black and white. It, it'll make a difference.
Yes, and how do you attach it to the handle?
Um, so good point. Uh, what we do is, now like in here, you see the, the hole at the top, that's part of the design. Um, in production though, what we found is, we go for a smaller hole, um, and they'll be like reinforced with like a, um, uh, little, whatever you want to call that, little loop. And then there's like a little paperclip kind of thing going through it because, um, sometimes there is an issue when the cart gets dumped with the other designs that the handle will fall off.
Do you think you needed explanation of what we're doing when you first, when you first start?
Um, I, I, only if a, a resident came out and approached me, then yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very prepared to speak with them. Um, uh, everything I'm doing, I think is with good intentions, so that would go, you know, quarterly. But in the case of like, uh, uh, for residents that don't see me, um, no, I, I kind of feel like the card is, you know, the cart tag is pretty straightforward. Um, to circle back to Director Schaefer's point, um, you, you could have a very legitimate point that people will look straight past that with your help, um, information there. I do believe that we could create the room, um, and you know, we'll work together, uh, staff and I, on where we want to put the sand district logo.
Okay.
Um, but that, that's, you know, it's incredible what the sand district and the residents in this area have done. Establishing that on the paper, if only, you know, twenty-five percent of people read it, still it raises awareness. Um, and, you know, it, it, it's what you guys have done to contribute to the community.
No, I understand it. It just, it, it kind of goes back to what Adam was saying earlier. People don't read statistics. They look at graphics. They, they, they're, they're going to like the pictures of the food, uh, but numbers, it, it, I, I don't know.
Make it as simple as possible.
Exactly. And the one thing you're going to have to stock up on, latex gloves.
Yes.
Get a face mask and don't wear those nice shoes.
Now, how long will it take to do a hundred and fifty homes? Because they, Misa Verde's all in one day.
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, you know, I, I think probably going to done in like two to three hours, which, you know, shouldn't take too long. I, I'll know officially after actually do it around.
Yeah.
But considering that, um, you know, there's two different ways you can go about, um, I'm not going to be able to access the interior contents of the cart and, um, you know, all these homes in a row, they're all next to each other. I'm a pretty fast walker. Um, the best answer would be after it's done, the first few times, but, um, shouldn't be too bad.
Should you give it a shot? I was thinking maybe should have somebody help you with it.
The, the biggest thing will be, uh, to beat the trucks, you know? So yeah, so I'll, I'll work with operations to figure out where the truck begins.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, did, did Jeff, you want to?
Yes, I have four comments on this. First one, should there be a second oops card for if, if you notice this people have put green waste in their regular trash can? This is about the trash and green waste, you know? It could make, it could be obvious they're making another mistake than having their regular trash can overflowing with green waste. Should there be a card for that? Second, you make a great point that your newsletter is bilingual. This is not bilingual. Third point, um, I don't actually see dog poop here. So I'm not sure the card is going to help unless that's indicated. Might, might be better to put that than stable bedding, which took me a while to figure out what that is. That's a straw from a place where you keep a horse and not a lot of people into the plaid to couple of Santa Claus and others. And then the final point, I'm fairly well informed. I do not go to these trash seminars that you go to. I understand you're not supposed to put electronics, sharps and so forth in the carts. I have not sliced. I do universal waste dish. I had to look that up at Google to find out what universal waste is. That's not supposed to be in a cart.
What is it? Did you look?
That, that is common household items. They're regarded as hazardous, such as the first light bulb and so forth. So I would be totally baffled by-
I just thought it was an all-encompassing universal way of reading the health.
In that case, you can't put anything in the cart.
You know, do we want, you're committed to be?
Yeah, I think Scott's thinking the stuff, the stuff that we should be talking about.
Start, you know, maybe come up with a little bit better card. For these, these RFPs.
Include things like batteries, first lights.
Exactly. We know that we can't do a lot of stuff because we know that.
Yeah.
Totally confused me.
So if I hear the board, Chris, you want us to revise the card in the committee before we decide to submit it? Is that what you want?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's, you know, we're, this is a new program, experimental for three weeks and then we'll see. And that, that way the committee will be responsible for publicly making the decision.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's kind of-
When, when were you thinking about starting it? When were you thinking about starting the program?
Well, I guess, I think just maybe a few more changes to it, we're ready to go. So that's, that's the way I think, I mean.
I would leave it up to the committee to, you know, if we haven't met for a couple of weeks, do you guys make a decision?
My suggestion is let's, let's go ahead with the program and we go back with the results to the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think organic, from an organic standpoint, we're going to see a lot more results. Not in the winter time, it's going to be more in the, in the spring, people start doing yard work and stuff like that, so. I, I think it's something we need to talk about.
That'd be better for you too, Art.
I'm sorry, say it was more the spring and then the winter, you know?
Just because of the weather.
Yeah.
You know, the timing, because it might tell it's setting. Did you have?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments too. Um, that's a lot of information that looks like and, uh, but, A, stay positive. If you put the one out that says, oh, you made a mistake, it's going to wind up in the trash right away. Uh, but positive is, is where you need to go. Be positive. And if people don't get it, get a tag, then they maybe want one because they need it to be positive. Uh, I think a lot of that information would be really great in the newsletters. This is newsletter information. Uh, and, and those pictures, I don't know what they are. I can't make them all out. I think there's a piece of pizza, uh, and there's some leaves. What about the branches that the leaves were on? How big can you, uh, go with that? With your, with your tree trimming? If I can cut it with my clippers, then it's okay. If I can't, if I have to use a saw, then it's too big and it has to go in the other cart?
That's probably a fair threshold.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, are you going to tell them? Tell us. Um, it, it's, I think, I think it's a great idea to have something. I, I was thinking of, uh, printing something that is unplasticky, kind of stuff that can take weathering and put a sticker on top of the trash can. Uh, that gives you a clue as to what's supposed to go in there and, and, uh, and it can weather. So, um, the, the biggest part is the, and- So, um, the, the biggest part is the, and being positive.
I, I think we all agree with you there.
Um, thank, uh, thank you. I guess I have to update.
Thank you.
I like the oops one, we're standing because people need to know they messed up.
Here, in charge of.
Yeah, so we'll talk about it.
Uh, any other comments, uh, on the organics?
I'm sorry?
Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll address these issues at the.
We'll, we'll fill in the blanks.
Right. Uh, closing items, oral communications and director comments. Mike, you want to start?
Uh, I'm good, Jim. Thank you, good, good information, Sam.
Arlene?
Actually, I've said it all before, so, thank you, just have a nice holiday season.
Good message, Art.
Yeah. Let's say a prayer for Cheryl.
Well, she had her whole, she's doing, uh, she's doing really well, and, and Bob, all the best to her.
Okay, this may be adjourned.